Okay. All righty, well, thank you very much for joining us by Zoom once again for our monthly zoning board meetings. I'm going to start by asking for a motion to approve the minutes from the April 21st meeting. They were distributed and comments were given. And would anyone like to make a motion to approve them?
I'll make that.
Already make that. Anyone want to second it?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right, so the minutes are approved. Excellent. So I guess we will just start. Do we have attendees? It doesn't, on my screen, I don't see anybody.
Yes, we have attendees. There are two phone callers and
Oh, okay, great.
It looks like we have the applicants for 127 Rutter Dubois.
Okay. So do we have the applicants for Fargo LLC? 90 Fargo Lane?
To be honest, I'm not sure. That was John Malone, but I don't know if it's his phones that are calling in. But anybody that is here to speak on behalf of the applicant, I do ask that they hit the raise hand button on the side. But I see everybody for 127 Rutter Dubois, so maybe I can just
Okay, so maybe we'll just, we'll take the matters out of order and we'll start with Birch, which is 127 Rutter Dubois, and we'll, we'll circle back at the end of the evening to Fargo if they are with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so who, who do we have on behalf of Birch?
We have Jim Gibbons and Eugenia and his associate.
Got it?
Jim Gibbons here.
Hello. How are you?
I'm good. I hope everyone on the board is doing well and thank you for hearing our case tonight.
Yeah, just before we get started, just a little housekeeping. First of all, are you comfortable going forward with Zoom? That's okay with you and, and your client? You're fine with that?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Excellent. And can you get the proof of service? You know, you had to serve your neighbors. Can you get that to someone at Village Hall so that we just have that on record?
Yes, of course.
The Sarah Palermo, if, if possible.
Okay, we'll do that. So proof of service.
Great. Okay, so tell us about, I believe it's a, it's a, it's a deck, correct? That you would like to?
Yes, there's, there's an existing deck at the back of the house. That is, if we go to drawing SK1, and if you need us to share those, Eugenia can forward that to the board.
Do you know how to do the share screen? If not, I can pull them up for you.
Yeah, I can. If you say what to participate in screen sharing.
Yeah, you can, since I promoted you to a panelist, you should be able to use a share screen.
Try again. No, say the same. House disable participant screen sharing.
Yeah. You just have to hit share screen and it gives you options. If you have the plans opened as a PDF, you can select that and it should be able to share the screen.
Well, I can.
I can pull it up for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Just let me know which page you would like me to go to.
Probably the easiest page for comparison would be second to last. It's denoted as SK1. And that, that's good. But what we have here is a footprint of the existing deck, which is about 344 square feet. And then the stairs that go with it are, they are also 43 square feet. And what we're proposing is a, an expanded deck that goes into the rear, rear yard setback and also encroaches upon the side yard setback on the left side. It encroached before and it's going to continue to approach if the board approves the, the variances. But we're looking at expanding the deck to about 537 square feet, which is not a significant expansion of the deck. But if you, you look at page G1, which is the first page, if you look at the lot coverage numbers, I suppose that sometime after the house was built, the zoning may have changed, but we have a 16% required building coverage in the 1F20 zone. And as the house and the deck exists right now, it's 31%, so it's about 15% over the allowable lot coverage of 16% or 107% of the, over what the allowable is at 16. And then if we go over to the right-hand side, it says required 18% over, which really means that we're, we are now 112.5% over the allowable 16%. So those are significant numbers. But the deck project itself appears to be relatively small. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. I guess the other required variance, the smaller one is the side yard on the left-hand side. And what is allowable is, is 15 feet. And we have only 14.4 feet. And if we continue the line of the deck, it's going to be over by 0.6 feet or about 7, 7.2 inches. So that's another variance that we're going to request of the board and bring that to your attention. And then the rear yard, the rear yard requirement is 35 feet. The existing deck is only 28.1 feet from the rear yard, so it's already non-conforming with the current zoning codes. And we propose to go 22 feet, which will require 13-foot setback. So the numbers look significant, but the project is, is simply a deck extension. And we wanted to come before the board to see if we could get permission to move forward on that. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them at this point. But that's, that's the, the essence of the project.
Is there, why are you proposing the size of deck that you're proposing?
The client wishes to enlarge the deck for more family enjoyment. And it just seems to, to meet their needs. We're extending, I believe, maybe about six or seven feet more than what it is right now. Yes, it's eight feet now. We're proposing to go actually 14 feet, so about six feet longer, but the, the client wished, wished us to, to pursue this, this possibility so that they could maximize the use of, of their deck and the area underneath it.
I was curious, who owns the property behind your client's property? I know it's undeveloped there, but you know who owns that?
I would have to look that up. I'm not aware of who owns that. But when I was on site looking at it, it, it looks, it, it looks undeveloped and, and vast from looking at the yard.
And, and do you know if any of the other neighbors have extended decks similar to the ones your client is proposing? I couldn't tell driving by.
I think the person, if we're looking at the front of the house on the left side, I think the deck on the left side is a larger deck than what we have. And I don't remember if the deck on the right is, is the same. Eugenia, do you remember that?
Yes, we're, we're neighbors. Fixed deck, larger than the, our clients want. She wants just six feet away. So basically, all the neighbors have similar deck on their property.
Do you have any diagrams or pictures that reflect that?
We have pictures, but I don't know if they're readily available. We could put the package together to, to show that. And if the neighbors provide permission, we would be glad to measure the footprints of the adjacent decks to give the board more perspective.
So the side yard setback apparently is no more than what it is now, correct?
Correct, 14.
In fact, even the garage is, infringes on the side yard setback more than the deck does.
Yes, nine and a half feet from the left side property line.
So, you know, the deck is, it's, it's, I guess it's 193 square feet larger than the existing deck, which is about 50%, a little bit more than 50% more than what's existing there now, right? It's, it's an additional six feet. I guess it's eight feet. Want to make it 14 feet deep?
Yeah, we want to make it 14 feet. And
It's eight feet now?
It's eight feet. If we don't include the, the nook on the left side in the back, that recesses in a little bit. So if we take the rear plane of the house, about eight feet, we're standing 14, so six feet further, it should be less than 50% in terms of area. Doing a seat in the pants calculation here.
But what's so magical about 14 feet? Let's say we gave you two feet, three feet, four feet, right? So it'd be less, less expansive. So instead of eight feet, it's 10 feet or 12 feet. What's magical about 14 feet?
Just the, the whole concept was originated with discussions with our client, Mrs. Birch. And I guess she wants to put some landscaping on the decks, some planters. If we look over at G4, and then underneath the deck, I think she'd like to put some swings for the children. But it's a concept that she had requested, so we would, we said we'd attempt to get the, the approval through the ZBA. We can go back and speak with our client if the board wishes and see if we could limit the size of the deck.
You know, it's somewhat ironic that she wants a large deck to put greenery on the large deck. Watch this and she just makes the deck smaller and have plantings in the backyard. Or why doesn't she just have the swings on the grass as opposed to under the deck that's 14 feet?
Um, I, I guess it's just more self-contained underneath the deck, using the structure of the deck to create the swing. And then to place the, a swing set in the backyard. That would be further away from the house. But we could discuss these issues with our client and, and get some more clarification for the board.
What's the condition of the existing deck? Does it need to be replaced? Or is this something apart from replacing the existing deck because of its deteriorated or something of that sort?
No, the existing deck has a significant deterioration. So this, this is a, a good time to consider extensive repairs or, or replacement. But the, the deck is very near to its useful life at this point.
And again, I know you started going over the numbers when we first started. Can you tell us again, the numbers? It's, it's existing, is, is presently non-conforming with the size of the deck?
Well, the, we were looking at built, the building coverage. So right now, as a pre-existing condition, the lot coverage is 107% over the 16%. So the, the raw number is 30, 31%. And comparing that to the 16, it's 107% over. I was trying to show the board that even though the numbers are, are quite significant, when we look at 107% to the proposed new deck extension, it comes out to 112.5%. So roughly about a five and a half, close to 6% increase in lot coverage with the 193 square feet addition.
The, the existing, this will be my last line of questioning, I promise you. The existing deck and the coverage presently, what is this, what is, what's the, the footage of what's allowed and the footage of what's there presently?
Um.
If you have that available.
I, I don't think the deck would even be allowed by today's zoning. Not that it wouldn't be allowed, but it just, the whole set of numbers creates such a large overage in the coverage that it, I suspect, I'm not an Irvington resident, but I suspect that the, the zoning code had changed sometime after the house was built in 1986.
So do you know what the percentage? So let's say the existing is a certain, certain percentage. What is the proposed over the existing? Do you have that comparison?
Let's see if I have just deck, deck to deck or?
No, coverage to coverage.
So coverage to coverage, it's
You're not including the driveway, of course, right? Driveway's not included.
No, Ed had indicated that's not part of it. We, we made that mistake at the planning board, but we corrected our mistake. I mean, 537 square feet versus 344 square feet, so 193. I guess the deck compared to the existing lot coverage would be about 2.3% over.
I, I have it. So your existing is 2607 in coverage on the top left?
Yes.
Right? And then your proposed is 2800.
Okay, yes.
On the bottom right. Well, that's 193, I guess that's what it comes down to.
Yeah. But all the ingredients that make up the lot coverage just put us out of the, the ballpark in terms of complying with the permissible lot coverage by today's zoning codes.
Looks like if you got rid of the walkway, you wouldn't even, well, I guess you'd still be non, non-conform, but 188 feet for the walkway compared to 193 is what you're doing, correct? And, and none of us, let me just, as a side, none of us have seen the property correctly. We, we're not doing that. So no one's been out there to see the adjoining properties or anything else like that. Ken, you said you did drive.
I drove by a couple of days ago, but it's all in the back. I didn't walk in the back. I just kind of glimpsed between houses.
Yeah, I also did a, a drive-by, but you can't really, you can't see anything that's affected by this.
Jim, is this home part of a homeowners association? I believe it is, yes. The association, I believe, is Dearman Park Homeowners Association.
Field Point.
Field Point?
Well, yeah, that's how I refer to it.
Just going by the mailing list.
Ken, I'm sorry, can you hear me? It's John Demling.
Yes, I can hear you, John.
I, I'm sorry, it's taken me 20 minutes to get this damn thing working. I do Zoom meetings all the time. I've never had trouble. I had more trouble tonight. I'm sorry. Forgive me for being so late. Go ahead, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. I calculate the average to be a lot 7%.
7% over existing or 7% over allowable?
Over existing. If it, if, if the numbers were like 193 additional compared to 2600. Yeah, those are the numbers that I heard. I don't
Right.
It's a little frustrating because I, you can't make notes on, on these
Yeah.
things.
Has the association reviewed these plans and approved? Or is that, does that go after the village does a review? I was going to reach out and see how they want us to, to present this to them with the, the situation that we currently have. But the planning board also suggested that we reach out to the homeowners association and bring them up to speed beyond the mailing list notification.
Well, you probably need their approval, right? And I guess if you were denied by them, you wouldn't be here with us today.
Correct, yes.
Sarah, are you still there?
Me?
The chair, the chair lady.
Sorry.
That's okay. Because I haven't heard from Sarah. Is she still with us?
I don't see her in the thumbnail pictures.
Well, we're looking for Sarah. Can I ask a question? Hello?
Yes, I, I'm listening, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, I actually was out there today. Who owns the property behind the lot?
That question came up a few minutes ago. I, I have to look into that and find out for the board. I just know when I was out there that it's, it's a large vacant piece of land that's not developed. So I can find that out.
From, from my perspective, that seems to be a some consequence. I consider that a some consequence. No, it doesn't, that doesn't look to me like that land's ever likely to be developed. Maybe it will, but if it will, that, then I would be concerned about increasing the variance.
May I just suggest we try to get the chairperson back on the line before we continue? I'm going to try to shoot her an email.
I was actually in the process of sending that per an email explaining why I couldn't get on, but I, essentially it worked out.
Anyone have any suggestions? I just shot her an email.
She's, she's about to be connected.
Okay.
Hello. So I've been listening in the whole time, but I have not been able to be heard. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So yeah, I mean, my thoughts on this are these numbers are, are pretty extraordinarily high. And the problem is, I'm not sure we can get any trade-offs because
Oops.
That that would be approved by Field Point.
We lost you partway through, Sarah.
Oh, sorry. So what I was saying is, you know, I think these numbers are very high and I don't see a way to do trade-offs in terms of walkways or anything like that, because I don't believe that would be approved by Field Point. That might be some information that the applicants want to get from Field Point and come back to us with. But I, this is a very high number. I'm not feeling particularly comfortable about that. And I'm wondering what everybody else thinks.
Sarah, when you say it's high, you mean it's starting high? There's already
Yeah, and going up. Yeah, exactly. And I'm just, I, I'm sort of feeling a little, well, not conflicted, I'm feeling a little pessimistic about our chances going forward with this, just with those numbers and with the fact that I don't see us getting any trade-offs in terms of coverage. What, does anybody else have a feeling on this one?
I agree also. I also think it's, it's probably premature because they should have had input from the, from their own board because that's like their administrative little agency that needs to make a decision. And if they had either reduced it or whatever it is, we would have had an easier decision to make. But for us now to be kind of reviewed by their, their board doesn't make any sense.
I, I absolutely agree that it's premature. I'm only hesitant in that, oh, hold on, I think I'm getting through on video. I'm only hesitant, yeah, here I am. Hold on. All right, sorry about that, guys. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I mean, my hesitation, we could put this off a month, have them go back to Field Point, get whatever approvals they need through that and come back. My hesitation with doing that is that I'm not sure what you can come back to us with that we would be comfortable. I don't want to waste your time either. Do you know what I mean? I'm not sure. With numbers this high, I'm not sure what you're going to come back to us with. And, and certainly I would think it, for my comfort anyway, and I'm not the final word on this, but it would need to be a smaller deck. And but I'm just not sure you can make it small enough that we're going to have any room here. Does anybody?
To, to put it another way, if, if the Field Point homeowners association, whatever approved it, I think what we're saying, notwithstanding their approval, what we see here, we would, we would be reluctant to approve. Isn't that correct?
That's what I think. I'd like to hear other people's opinions on it, but that's, that's my opinion.
I agree. This is already, and I, I guess some of the questions are, I mean, this is probably built at some point when they built all these decks and just the originally sized deck? And how long has it been there? And the reason that she wants to increase is because she wants to have plantings there and swing? You know, that doesn't really outweigh us granting a variance. I mean, there really has to be some articulate reason to do so. It's going to benefit the, the applicant which requires a variance. I mean, how is, how is the fact that she wants to do those things enough to overcome what the law says in Irvington about the size and setbacks and coverage and things of the sort?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, well put. That's, that's where I am on this. I just don't know if there are I just don't know if there are any dissenting opinions on this or if we want to boot it down, so to speak, or if we want to make a motion. I'm just not sure, as I say, what could come back to us that would, that would change my mind.
Can I have one, one additional question?
Sure.
The, the rear, the rear yard in this property, is it level or is it sloping?
It is. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Sloping. It slopes. There's like a berm with a fence. A fence several feet away from, from the, the deck and it slopes down, if I remember correctly. So there's an upper area close to the buildings and then it slopes down.
It's a reasonably steep slope, as I, as I recall. I was out there today, actually.
John, did you go in the, in the yard area?
Yes, I did.
Because we were talking before you came on about what kind of depth the neighbors had and did you happen to notice?
The one, as you face the house, the, the house on the left looks to me like they have a, may even be a larger deck. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't try to step it off or anything, but it was certainly prominent.
Of course, the question there is whether or not it's legal.
That's one question, yeah. Yeah.
Details, details, Artie.
Like several of you, I, I drove by, but I didn't get out of the car or anything. And there's just not that much you can see from the car, unfortunately.
If you think about it, I mean, that's a pretty congested area up there in Field Point. If there's any place we should be worried about coverage and stormwater runoff and things of the sort, that's the kind of place we should be kind of concerned about.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I think, given everything we've heard tonight, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to deny the variance. I'm sorry to do it, but I just don't see what you're going to come back with that's going to work for us on this. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, so let's vote from top to bottom on my screen. So Artie.
Who's first?
Artie. You are.
I, so I approve the motion to deny.
Rosie?
Yeah, same for me.
Ken?
Yes, same.
John?
Yes.
And Judd, yes. Yes or no? I thought I heard you say yes, but I might be jumping the gun. You say yes, so, so I am sorry, but the motion is denied. So thank you very much for coming on with us tonight. Sorry, we couldn't have a better outcome for you, but we are going to deny this one.
Thank you for hearing us and I appreciate your time.
Thanks. There we go. Okay, so Sarah, who else do we have on with us tonight? We don't have Fargo yet, as far as we know. John Malone's not with us yet.
Oops, you muted.
Oh, damn you, geez.
Now, we heard.
Sorry, John is here.
John is here.
Yeah, he's here. Right.
John, John Malone?
Yeah, John Malone.
Is here.
We got a message from him saying he was probably getting on.
Okay, terrific. And what, what's the other, I'm sorry, just lost my, my agenda just went down. What's the other new matter we have before us?
It's Three Dow's Lane.
Three Dow's, oh, sure. Okay, so do we have the applicants from Three Dow's Lane with us? Might have lost Sarah Palermo, did we?
No.
No, she's there.
Yeah, she's here.
There's, there's John Malone.
Okay, well, let's, let's go to Fargo Lane then and we'll come back and see. Hi, John.
So I'm, I'm three, I'm three Dow's Lane also.
Okay. Well, where would you like to start?
Would you want to just do the Fargo one? Is that one? So in that case, we're just asking for an extension on the timeframe associated with the variances that we received on the property. We were trying to start in the spring and we had a moratorium on construction, so we got make that start time. We're not proposing any changes or anything. It's just a delay.
Now, do you have plans to go forward and start?
There's problems with the financing, but I think the bank, they're, basically they're looking at another bank and they have a positive response from the bank so far. So we're, we're, you know, delay led to it, to a need to refinance also because of the limitation on their original financing. The plan is to move forward.
So they want to move forward, they're just trying to get the financing and then construction halted and, yeah. Does anybody have any questions for John on, on Fargo?
How long a timeframe would the project be, do you estimate, once it got started?
The construction is probably nine to 12 months, just sort of a typical house construction. It's hard for me to estimate, you know, what this delay would be. I would, I would think it's in the category of three months from, I mean, we had a March, we were starting actually in the beginning of March was the start date. And so the COVID thing sort of threw us pro loop there. So I'm assuming, you know, it would be great to have a, just another, what would that be? It's just the, the way that the code reads for the variance is shovel in the ground. It's, is the starting date. So if we had a year from the initial variance, I guess, I didn't ask for a specific amount, but if we're asking for another six months, that would probably take care of it, I would think. And I suppose if there's some other delay related to this, we could come back or we could extend it further, whatever. I don't know what the board's policy is. I would leave it to you guys, whatever you think is appropriate.
But just so I'm clear, the issues there, financing, it has nothing to do with COVID now, right?
Was the stop, yeah, the COVID was the stopping point that led to the issue with the financing.
But as of, as of today, construction can start in this region.
Yes, yeah, it could have, right? If we, if we, you know, there's other, there's, there was other things that were related to it, like I think the, the financing means that the contractor that was lined up is not ready right now. So I think there would be potentially some delay related to getting that, that contractor back on board. There's, there's a few things that would that would need to be ramped up again, once the financing is in place.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think the variance is good for a year, no matter what. I don't think we decide whether it's good for.
We don't. We give, if we, if we extend it, it's extended a year.
Oh, I see.
We're not, we have not looked favorably on extending it again. So you would, you would kind of have to get a shovel in a ground, in the ground in the next year or else. I, I don't know that we've never extended it a third time, but it would, you know, a second time, I mean, given a sort of a third year, but.
I mean, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are, but I, I think, I hope, I hope this isn't another, I hope we're not doing this in another year.
Right, right, right.
It feels like things are normalizing.
These are pretty extraordinary circumstances, so I guess I should never, never say never, right? We've never done this for.
I think it's reasonable to assume a year.
But yeah, I just sort of strongly encourage you, considering that construction is open today, if in the next year you could do that. We've, we have given extensions before, we just don't like to go beyond that set, that second year.
It's appropriate to reapply that because maybe conditions have changed or something.
Right, exactly. But assuming we're meeting in person next year, that hopefully that won't be an issue. So, so I will make a motion to extend for another year the variances that were granted last April. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, we'll start, Judd will start with you. Are you in favor or opposed? Okay, Judd is in favor. John? John Dimling, yep.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, Rosemary?
Yes.
And Artie?
Yes.
Okay. It's approved and I'll send you a letter later this week.
Thank you.
Giving you another year. So now talk to us about Dow's Lane.
So Dow's Lane is an existing accessory apartment that we are expanding, the accessory apartment to include another bedroom on the downstairs level. I think it meets all the requirements. The reason we're in front of planning board is we're adding a small balcony-like deck that is sitting on top of existing impervious surface. So even though it's not increasing impervious surface, it is impervious surface on top of impervious surface. And, and it's making that, you know, it's extending, it's, it's extending a non, it's not extend, it's not making it larger, but it's changing a non-conforming condition. So we're asking for a variance for that piece of it. It's just a small balcony. The thing that is special about this project, this property, if you guys remember, is that the property is completely surrounded by the school district property. So it does not have and will not have any impacts on adjacent properties. The area that is, where this building is, is sort of the dumpster area for Dow's Lane School. The area is fully screened. The owner is Larry Shepson, he's a landscape designer and installer. So if you know the property, it's completely screened with bamboo and, and every form of planting. So there's no visual impact on anybody and there's no adjacent property.
And you have, John, could you have Sarah pull up, Sarah Forman will pick, pull up the diagram that best shows the elevation?
Do you want me to share, share mine? I can share mine.
If you can do it, then go ahead.
Thank you.
No, I'm disabled. Sarah's got control of it.
I'll try to fix that, but you should be able to share the screen.
Yeah, so if you go, if I go to share screen, it says participant disabled screen sharing. So I think there's just a toggle on me instead of, do you see that to a large share screen?
I'll, I can pull up your plans, just let me know which page you would like me to go to, that's all.
What do you want to see, Artie? The elevations or plans or?
As you described it, you know, the height.
Right.
So I think the best place to look at that was, might be the last sheet, Sarah. It's the exterior elevations.
Okay.
Now, this property's been before us before, hasn't it? You remember that already?
Oh, yeah, many years ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago, a long time ago. And I think it's the same thing. It's right, the sort of extra living space, not the, not the main.
Right, I, I think when we, you know, the, the Board of Trustees approved the law for the accessory apartments, I think when we first, because it was a garage space, it had an apartment above, but I think even because it was a change of use, I think you had to, even though there was no expansion to the building, I think there might have been a deck that was legalized at that time that was in the setback. And I think, just because it was a change of use as an accessory apartment, I think you guys had to say, okay, because the entire building or half of the building is in the setback, is in the side of the setback. The existing building. So here you can see the circled portion here is the new
That's the new.
Little balcony that's being added to the west facing side of the building. And you can see the west elevation shows what it is. It's just sort of extending about three or four feet. That's, it's existing impervious. So if you scroll back to the, I guess the site plan would be the best place to go back to.
So it's existing impervious, but it's not, that's not existing coverage. You're adding coverage.
Well, it is coverage. It is, it's coverage because it's a, it's a walkway.
Right.
So it's already.
So it's already counted towards the coverage?
Yeah, it's already counted towards the coverage. So Sarah, if you can zoom into the area that is, that says the garage on the, on the site plan there. So I think you can, you can see the proposed, either, either of the coverage calculations, there's a dotted line indicated and it says line of proposed deck above. I don't know, Sarah, if you scrolled up a little bit, that's.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Oh, you're coming over there, okay.
Is this where you want me to be or?
Yeah, I think this is, is this okay, guys? This, so you can see there's a, there's basically a hatched area on the, on the one and a half story stock over garage, there's a hatched area there. That's the, that's the proposed deck. It's sitting entirely on top of the existing walkway.
Hey, John, this is, this is Artie. And you said earlier that you guys are adding a second bedroom to the building?
Yes.
And that has nothing to do with us, obviously.
I, yeah, that, the, the ordinance, the ordinance allows for a maximum of two bedrooms for these accessory apartments. So I don't, I don't think there's anything needed.
Okay, is it fair to say that this balcony is required to quote unquote service the second bedroom you're putting in?
No, it's, it's actually servicing the living space, the main living space, not the, the second bedroom.
Okay.
It has more to do with providing, you know, access, a little bit of access to the outside. So the, the way that the, you know, the, the property is not really accessed by these tenants, if you think about it that way, right? These, these accessory apartment tenants, if you look at the site, you know, there's the driveway that they share, the front driveway, but the rear yard that faces the river, the west side of the building is not theirs to use. That's the main house. So this is, the intent is to give them a little bit of outdoor space that's related to the living space. It's not, it's not really related to the bedroom.
Okay.
Right. And so, I mean, it looks, just from looking at this, right, that basically the whole structure is in the side yard setback.
The whole thing is already.
But I mean, that you're not really adding to that, you know, very much through this.
Right. And you know, the, the, this deck is set in a little bit from the edge of the existing building, right? It's not the full length of the building, if you see that. So it's not quite as bad as the building setback.
Right.
I think, you know, the thing that's special again about this property is that, you know, there, there, it has no side yard impacts.
Right.
It's not a typical property.
Now, what's the dimensions of the deck, if you would please?
I think it's, it's about eight by three. Very narrow.
So you can build a nice deck that's eight feet, huh?
That's the proposed, the proposed deck is eight.
That was from the earlier project.
No, that was a little.
Yes.
Comment.
I mean, this is not, you know, I think you could put, you could probably put two chairs on it. I think it's.
Well, balcony is what you've called it, which is.
Yeah.
Right term for it.
And how much coverage are you adding with this?
No coverage adding.
No coverage adding, right. Then why are we, are we not giving you a variance for coverage? I thought we were.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way it's been interpreted in the past, right? If you had coverage that was just on the ground, if it was patio, that's a different kind of coverage than if it's building. So it still requires a different variant, you know, like it's a, it's a, it's not a, we're changing the character of the coverage as opposed to.
As opposed to adding.
Adding, right.
Correct, okay.
Plus we're non-conforming, correct? So.
Yeah, you're already non-conforming.
Already non-conforming, right. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for John on this?
Can, can you, can we get the, what's on the screen now moved a little to the left? So we can see existing, no, no, move it to the left.
So I think John's.
This is, this is the furthest left.
Existing, so we can see existing condition, proposed condition.
Right.
Move it a little more to the left.
Or maybe make it.
I mean, right?
Small. I think John, I think John.
Existing condition.
Diagrams, yeah.
Yes.
Where it says condition, that, yeah, exactly, existing.
We have to move, move it more.
Sorry.
Or something like that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think the numbers are the same. I just want to verify that.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my controls here.
Well, yeah, the, the numbers are all listed as the same.
They're all the same. Yes, they are, yep. Oh, that's perfect. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, they're, they're the same.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, is that the deck along in the bottom there we're talking about? Is that the 87 square feet? No.
No, it's the, it's the dotted line that's, it's still counted in terms of the calculation, it's still counted as patio, but you see the, there's a dotted line on the, on the west side of the structure on the top of the. But you see the, there's a dotted line on the, on the west side of the structure, on the top of the, on the top of the garage, towards the top of the page, and it says line of proposed deck above walk. That's the piece we're talking about.
I got you. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? I'm sorry, what was that? The deck is over an existing walkway. Yes, yeah, yeah. All right, if there are no other comments, then I'm going to make a motion to approve. As John said, this is a very unique property in a very unique situation. I think it has no impact on the neighborhood. I think it really has no impact on coverage. It's a different use of coverage, but it's not adding coverage. And it's adding very little to the side yard and front yard setback, which is already, you know, really been impacted. And I think it'll make a big difference in how they use the property. So for those reasons, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variances. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Okay, Rosemary did, Rosemary did.
Okay, so we will vote from top to bottom this time. Artie?
Yes, I approve.
Judd, you're now next, of my view. Rosie?
Yeah, I approve.
Okay, great. John Dimling, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, and how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, and Ken?
Yes, I'm here and yes, I vote to approve.
Okay. All righty, there we go. You're two for two tonight, John.
Thank you, guys.
Not like that, yeah.
I'm sorry if I, I don't know what, it was not, it was not the link, it was a computer problem on my side.
Yeah, now we're having all kinds of technical difficulties tonight, but we made it through and we heard all three. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll send out the letters this week.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right, everybody, take care. It was good to see you, even virtually. And who knows how much longer we're doing this, but this is what we're doing for now.